Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can everybody hear me all right? All right, very good. Thank you to all of you for coming out this evening. More so, thanks for your service. Thank you for your patience with us as well as the amount of time that you dedicate to either a zoning board or to the planning commission. Mike Kelly, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. And on top of all the work that you've done, you will do, I want to say thank you for helping us innovate this county for the future. Because at the end of the day, that's what these boards do. And I know that for some of you who have served on zoning boards or planning commissions in the past, this year is a change. And I appreciate your patience with us as we work through that change to try to be as effective as possible, as efficient in the use of resources as possible, but also making quality decisions with accurate information for the people of Johnson County. Before I go any further, I want to make sure I recognize the county commissioners who are here. Janee Hanslick, representing Overland Park in the 4th District. Commissioner Shirley Allen Brand, representing the 6th. I saw Commissioner O'Hara here earlier. I also saw Commissioner Ashcraft, who is heading to the JCDs Board Meeting where he is the liaison for the Board of County Commissioners. So on behalf of them and others who were unable to be here tonight, thank you for being here. Thanks for your service. Also, thanks for your recommendations even at times where we have disagreement. I know that there has been disagreement and there will continue to be disagreement. That's what the democratic process is all about, and that's why none of this is easy. But I think at the end of the day, if we all are here in good faith, working towards mutual aims, we're going to get a good decision or decisions for the people of Johnson County. It's amazing the foundation that Johnson County has built in its history. I remember just personally seeing how the development of Johnson County has been intentional, where they've gotten it right, and maybe where sometimes we didn't get it right. Whether that was by inaction, whether it was by making decisions that would have had to have been redone in years into the future. And I think we can learn from all those, but I think beyond a doubt, the vast majority of determinations have built a really solid foundation for our county. And it's no surprise that the secret is out of Johnson County. Our population continues to increase. Our economic investment continues to increase. We're up to about a quarter of the state's population right here in one county. But also about 46% of the state's economy is flowing through Johnson County, Kansas. So that means there are eyes on us for sure, and that more people are going to want to participate in Johnson County, whether as a place to live, to work, to run a business, to play, or otherwise. And so how we welcome in that attention, how that matches with the residents, the comprehensive plans and the desires of folks who are property owners here, who are residents, none of that is easy. So I apologize if you thought that this was going to be an easy thing, but I think all of you are here because you recognize it's a very important thing. And for that, I thank you very much for your time and your dedication. I am going to turn things over to Jay Leipzig, who's going to be, I think, emceeing today. And so thanks for being here. Thanks to the staff who took the time to put this together. And thank you all for your continued service to Johnson County. With that, Jay Leipzig.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that. Okay. Good evening. Or I guess, yeah, it is evening. Good evening, everyone. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Department. This evening, I think we have a great program lined up for you with a lot of information, although some of it might seem basic for you from our more experienced planning and zoning, zoning commission members, but we tried to make it kind of applicable to all levels. So hopefully, everyone will get something out of this training this evening. Feel free to ask questions as well. One thing I wanted to point out, this meeting is being recorded this evening, so if you do have questions, there are tabletop microphones on each table. If you push the button down, right now it's red, if you push the button down, it'll be green. Okay? So your voice is overheard on the microphones as well. I'm going to make just a couple of brief introductions, and we've got several people here that I want to introduce from not only the Planning Department, but also the County Management Team is here as well. Adam Norris is in the back. Susan Meyer is in the back as well. Any other CMO people? I think that's it. Also, Ryan Hager, our legal department, is in the back of the room as well. And Peg Trent, our chief legal counsel, is in this room as well. Any other non-planning folks that are missing? Okay. And then now for the Planning Staff, of course, Sean Pennley, our Deputy Director. Michelle Leininger is here. Michelle's kind of doing our technical work this evening with the projector. Diane Wicklund is here as well. And then Zoe Brown is somewhere. There's Zoe. And Karen Miller is in the back there. Also, we have Elizabeth Henderson and Melissa Colasanto. Elizabeth is our zoning technician, and Melissa is our administrative person that kind of does everything. Melissa runs the office for us essentially. And those two, you can thank for the food this evening and the setup. So I do appreciate that to both of you for your work in putting this together. Logistically, it's difficult to get this many people coordinated in the room at the same time, and it's like herding cats with staff as well. So I do appreciate that. I think those are all of the introductions I have, if I recall, except for the zoning members and the Planning Commission. I want to introduce those folks very quickly. This evening, from the West Zoning Board, we have Jeff Huff. He's our Chair. Also Craig Connell is here. There's Craig. Donna Gutzman is here. Roger Spears and Bob Paulson. There's Bob. Okay. And then from our East Zoning Board, we have Rod Richardson, our Vice Chair. And Rod's been in this board forever, right? Or for the previous board, a long time. We also have Kelly Rast, directly binding in. Ken Sanderson of Ken is here this evening. And then Fred Winger was not able to make it this evening. On our Planning Commission, Lindsay Grace is our Planning Commission Chair. She's not here this evening, but Fred Starrett is here. There he is. Okay. Our Vice Chair for Planning Commission, as well as Tim Ork, Kevin Hogan, Gregory Wolf. That's Greg. Let's see, Andrew Logan, Steve McGonig, and David Poderas. There we go. And I think that's everybody. If I miss someone, please let me know. It's amazing to get a...
Leslie.
Yes, Leslie, sorry. I knew we'd never get that right. So thank you all for being here. I appreciate it, and thanks for your time. As a Chairman, it said, you know, being on this, the Planning Commission and the zoning boards is not easy. It's a tough job, and matter of fact, it's one of the more difficult boards throughout the county, just because you're constantly dealing with adversity, and no matter what you do, you're going to make people angry at times, and there's, very rarely is there ever kind of an agreement on everything. So I do appreciate your time. I know it requires quite a bit of study. We keep you all busy with a lot of documents and papers and things to read and look at. So I do appreciate the efforts to do that. A couple of things this evening, other housekeeping things to point out. On your, the back of the table in your packet, is a Johnson County, Kansas Planning Year in Review was included in that, which I think the Planning Commission has seen. I'm not sure if the zoning boards have seen this yet, but this is a review of all cases throughout the year in 2023, as well as key projects that are anticipated in 2024. So you could look at things historically throughout the year and look at all of the cases that were before, that each zoning board and the Planning Commission. Then we also have a Golden Factors Analysis that was done by Rick Lynn, prior member of our legal team, which is a very good research paper on the golden factors, which we'll talk a little bit more here in just a bit. And I think we also find this at orientation as well, but it's one of the better papers we've seen on that subject. And then one more thing, while we're doing various announcements, I wanted to point out that the Framework OP, which is the update to the Overland Park Comprehensive Plan, is having an open house tomorrow evening from, excuse me, yeah, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Come and go at the Matt Ross Community Center. So if you're able to attend, and if you have an interest in that, please do. The Overland Park Planning Staff will be presenting to our Planning Commission again, I believe, here in the next couple of months. They presented about six months ago on this plan as well. So we certainly want to keep everyone updated on that. This should be a great event, and they always have a lot of very interesting things to look at as they move forward in that process. So if you have some time, I highly encourage you to do that. And then the last item, there's an overview of the planning application process we're going to talk about in more detail in our slides and the presentation. But just to point that out, this is another great reference tool, I think, that would be helpful in the future as we go through this presentation. Lastly, I wanted to mention a couple of key topics that we'll be looking at this next year. We're excited. You know, last year, we went through our land use updates for airports, for both Executive and New Century Airport, which is a huge accomplishment, great endeavor. So I appreciate the support of not only the Planning Commission, the Airport Commission, the B.O.C.C. reviewing that, a lot of work, a lot of meetings, and thanks to Diane and Sean for navigating that, navigating that process. And actually, all of the planning team was involved in that process throughout as well. So I appreciate all the efforts to do that. This next year, we'll be beginning our update to our zoning and subdivision regulations, which is another very large, extensive project. We're excited about that. That will be a multi-year effort, and you'll hear more about that throughout the year as we talk more, either at the Planning Commission or the various zoning boards. So more to come on that one, and I think it's an exciting plan. We'll take, as I said, kind of a multi-year effort, very intense effort, but we'll have a profound impact on development of the county as we move forward. The other piece that we're working on that you will hear more about is the possibility of a broadband plan. We're just doing some of the initial work on that, but that was a priority with the Board of County Commissioners, is to look at that and to see how broadband could be expanded in the unincorporated area. So we're starting to review that a little bit and study that. Some more to come on that as well. We're excited about that. I think that will also have a profound impact as we work with the cities throughout the county. So that completes my very basic comments as we start off. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Pennley, and we'll start the official presentation portion of the evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Jay. Good evening. Can everyone hear me all right? All right, got this set up right? Well, thank you again for everyone for being here. We really do appreciate it. I'm Sean Pennley, Deputy Director of Planning for the County. Very familiar faces. We're very familiar with seeing all of you. We appreciate you so much coming to our Planning Commission, zoning boards. Really, this is, we hope that this is beneficial for you to kind of give an overview of the overall planning process, our comprehensive plan, zoning and subdivision regulations. We'll talk about the participants in the process, including all of our planning boards, staff, and the public. And then we'll get into some details also about state statutes, the basis for our regulations and our comprehensive plan and establishing our requirements. And then, like I mentioned, we'll talk about the participants. And at the end, we would like to finish with Peg Trent, the County's Chief Counsel, to give an overview for some legal topics as it relates to the Planning Commission and zoning boards. We think they'll be very useful. She's got some great questions and some scenarios that many of you face or may face, and hopefully you'll have some good dialogue. And at the end, we'll be happy to answer any questions in all of this whole presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. So what is planning, or really, why do we plan? What's the purpose, right? Why do we do what we do? Many of you generally know, you've gone through the orientation, you know why it is important for the county to have planning. But basically, planning for any community is defined as guiding current and future land use and development by balancing the demands for growth, whether that's for individual property owners or for large developments, and balancing that with the needs of the community. And that could include the property owner themselves, the neighbors, and the community as a whole. We're looking out for really the interests of the community as a whole. So the primary goal is to protect the health, safety, and welfare and/or quality of life for the community. That's the goal. That's really what our intent is. And that involves the environment, the public, and the land itself. So really, that's the basis for what we do, and there's different ways that we go about accomplishing that. So how do we do this? We have two basic sides of planning, current planning and long-range planning. Current planning is what we generally consider things that we're used to with the zoning boards. We're dealing with land use applications, we're reviewing plans for zoning or subdivision or development, and we're reviewing that with the regulations and making sure it complies with the regulations. Then there's long-range planning, which we're looking into the future, for future goals of the county and protecting the health and the welfare of the county. So that's where we're going to get into the comprehensive plan. So I'll go into the details of those. But again, our Planning Commission and zoning boards are vital to this process, and we really do appreciate what you do, because staff can only do so much, and we have applicants that have maybe a challenging project that you are very familiar with. We rely on our Planning Commission and zoning boards to consider all of those applications or our regulation updates, and then forward those recommendations on to the Board of County Commissioners. So it's really vital to this process. So just looking at the comprehensive plan as a high-level overview, this is really the policy guide for how and where future development occurs in the unincorporated area of the county. So this is our guide, our guide for the county. Many of you may be familiar with that, especially the Planning Commission has gotten into some of the detailed aspects of the comprehensive plan. But the first goal that's listed, if you ever look at the document, and this is, if you don't have a hard copy, certainly it's available on the county's website, but the first goal is to provide for orderly growth and avoid scattered development, which is costly for public services. So we're looking for orderly growth in the county in the areas that it's intended for the different types of development. And so basic aspects of the comprehensive plan, we have a land use plan, and we have goals and policies for development. So many of you may be familiar, we've talked, the planners always include in any kind of zoning application or a conditional use application, we have the future land use plan and the designation for what a property is intended for, for its future uses. So we always refer to the future land use plan or the policy areas you may be familiar with. And we, I thought we were going to have maps, but I guess we may have, I forgot to bring those maps, but you're familiar with seeing those in the staff reports. We include, you know, the overall area plan, the designation in each one of our staff reports. So the plan is used by the public, staff, the zoning boards, and the Board of County Commissioners in considering any application for land use and development. So again, we always refer to that, and we'll talk in detail about some of the golden factors or the criteria that we use for evaluating these applications. But the comprehensive plan designates the guide for development. Then some of the aspects of that, there's, like I mentioned, a land use plan. We also have specific area plans. Most recently, as Jay mentioned, we adopted amendments to the airport compatibility plans for both New Century Air Center and Executive Airport. Those are area plans that are adopted as part of the comp plan. Those are vital for those areas around the airport. We also have other area plans in the county and just the future land use plan for the overall county. The zoning and subdivision regulations really are our, the set regulations. These are the document, it's the text, the actual regulations that outline specific permitted uses and other specific development requirements by different zoning districts. There is a map, oh, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry. I'm turning, here we go, sorry. Okay, I'm going too fast. This is sensitive. So the zoning map is another part of the regulations, which actually, every property in the county in the unincorporated area is designated in a different zoning district. So those different zoning districts will prescribe the types of land uses that are permitted. So examples, obviously, the RUR district is agricultural, so we expect that to be agricultural uses and maybe very low-density residential. Then, of course, you have residential districts. Yes, question?
Turn the volume up one minute.
Sure. Maybe if I get it closer to me. Can you hear me a little bit better now? Hopefully, this is better. I'll just try to speak louder. So the zoning map actually has the specific zoning designations. So there's going to be either agricultural zoning, residential zoning, or any non-residential. Some industrial developments, many of you, the West area is very familiar with this, with New Century Commerce Center, definitely obviously a different type of density and development and type of development than agricultural, or even commercial, a lot of commercial areas around the Stillwell area, the East on the border, very familiar with those different uses. So the subdivision regulations themselves deal more with the, or the subdivision regulations have size and area requirements. So that's going to get in more the density and the specific setback requirements. That's dealing more with the subdivision regulations. That also includes minimum infrastructure requirements. So those are essential, really, in looking at the types of development that can occur. Obviously, you have to have adequate roads, water, and sewer, depending on the type of development. If it's agricultural or very low residential, oftentimes, many of those don't apply. But if you get into any kind of a denser residential or non-residential, minimum infrastructure is critical. They have to have adequate minimum infrastructure for a development to be approved. Those are all prescribed in the subdivision regulations. And so really, both for the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations, both are, the goal is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and those are kind of outlined as a goal in that document. And so, as Jay mentioned, a major update that is coming forward to the Planning Commission will be our updates to our zoning and subdivision regulations. We expect it to encompass almost the entire document in some way. Almost all of the articles will be updated with this. It's probably going to take two years, so that's going to be a major update that we're really looking forward to, and the Planning Commission will be vital in that process. So the relationship between the two documents, as mentioned, they kind of work hand in hand, but both of the documents are essential in evaluation, evaluating any applications for zoning or subdivision. The comprehensive plan sets out the policies and goals for future land uses, and the zoning and subdivision regulations implement those requirements for the types of development that are allowed in certain areas. And that's, again, a major update to that whole process with zoning and subdivision regulations. We're going to be looking at different types of permitted uses. Some of the, you know, our zoning and subdivision regulations, we have done piecemeal updates as needed. We'll do amendments as needed, as you remember, recently with the accessory building use regulations, and there are some other recent amendments we've done. It's been just hit or miss, one article or two articles. This update that we're getting ready to start is going to affect the majority of the whole document. So we'll be getting into permitted uses, different types of zoning categories. We may be adopting a new zoning category for the airport, for the New Century Air Center. They may have an overlay district that we're considering. So you'll be considering all of that for the Planning Commission, and then that'll go to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle now. We're going to start looking at some of the bases for state statutes and the participants in the process.
Hopefully, I can make it so that the little pointer isn't jumping around. Maybe not. I'll try to stand still. A little nervous talking about this stuff, considering how many attorneys.
I don't think it's on.
It's on. Okay. Is that better? So state statute is what enables us to do what we do. Specifically, Article 19, or Chapter 19, Article 29, for planning zoning specifically for a county. There are other sections of the state statute that apply to different types of cities, but Chapter 19, Article 29, are the state statutes that this office is guided by. So this is just kind of a flow chart of what it does, and you can kind of see, Planning Commission creates those long-range plans and then creates those zoning and subdivision regulations. That state statute allows for those things to happen if you have a planning commission. Also allows zoning boards to be created, which if anybody's familiar with city government, those are set up as one entity. It's the Planning Commission, they do both, long-range and current planning. So this setup is a little different than what you may see in the cities. So it enables the zoning boards. We can have one for each township, or we can have one, joint one. At one point, we had a whole handful of them, and then they've slowly been condensed down to two, our East and West. And those boards review the zoning and subdivision applications and recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. Again, both the Planning Commission and the zoning boards recommend to the Board of County Commission, who makes the final decision. Going backwards here. So just some details about what is in that state statute. Again, authorizes creation of the zoning boards and Planning Commission. It authorizes a Planning Commission to create a comprehensive plan for quoted coordinated development of the county. So that's really what the goal of both the Planning Commission and the zoning boards are, is to direct that coordinated development in the county. And then, like I said, it authorizes the creation of the Planning Commission to create those zoning and subdivision regulations. Did I miss something? No. Okay. So those regulations may provide for the harmonious development of the county. Sean went into some of the details of what the zoning and subdivision regulations do, prescribe conditions under which you can go through the process of rezoning, conditional use permits specifically, and that these regulations shall be in accordance with the land use plan. So really, it's kind of an upside-down triangle, where you have the overarching community comprehensive plan, and then to build the zoning and subdivision regulations, you do that. You can have some more detailed land use plans. We have a Stillwell community plan, we have a Blue Valley master plan. Those are a little more detailed in that specific area. So we use all of these things to get to the end goal, to review those applications and to guide that development. I'm going to get this sooner or later. So the state statute also provides for the process at the zoning board. It's a similar process for the Planning Commission, for the comprehensive plan, the zoning board, and the subdivision regulations. The only thing is that the zoning board has projects that are site-specific. We can't send property owners within 1,000 feet of all properties to change, to update the zoning ordinance as a whole. So it's a little more of a micro process. So it requires public notice newspaper within 20 days prior to the hearing. This is where all of our processes are based out of, 1,000-foot male property owner notice. And then the zoning board recommends to the Board of County Commissioners, in between the zoning board and the Board of County Commissioners, there's an opportunity for property owners around that subject property to file a protest petition. And we did have one of those recently. It has to be signed by 20% of the total area located within 1,000 feet, 20% of the owners of the total area. So it's not just 20% of the owners, or 20, it's 20% of the land area of the owners. So it gets a little hairy. So what this does, if it's determined to be a valid protest petition, is it would then require the Board of County Commissioners to pass a favorable vote of at least four-fifths of all the members of the Board of County Commission. Really, what it, it's just requiring that extra scrutiny of, by the property owners. So this is only effective to the Board of County Commissioners, and they are, the property owners are protesting the action of the zoning board. So, yeah, and this can only be filed in between those two. So, yeah, and this can only be filed in between those two. And then, the action by the Board of County Commissioners, they can approve the recommendation, they can deny the recommendation, and they can remand it back to the zoning board for That's our state enabling. So then, we go on to more legal stuff. This is in your packet. Jay had mentioned about the golden factor. There's an analysis done by previous legal staff. If you look in staff reports, specifically around Kansas, but working in Iowa, we use these review criteria also. They're called the golden factors. It's based on a Supreme Court case, Golden versus City of OP, so it's very local. So what they are is land use criteria set forth by the courts for considering rezonings and conditional use permits. But these are not specifically listed in our regulations as review criteria. They help explain the decision-maker, how the decision-makers arrived at the recommendation that they did. So it helps further explain, we did X, Y, and Z because of A, B, and C. But these are non-exclusive. There can be other things that the staff looks at, other review criteria, and our CUP's -- our CUP section does have other review criteria to consider with conditional use permits. So these are -- this is a non-exclusive list. So some of them may apply better in certain situations, but again, we lay them out in the staff report, along with more review criteria, just to give that solid evidence if the case were to go on to further court. It explains why the zoning board recommended what they did. So -- and then, in that packet, it goes on to explain some of the details of those. There's eight factors. Character of the neighborhood, and you'll see these in our staff reports. They're specifically listed out. We give an analysis. Character of the neighborhood, zoning and uses of nearby properties, suitability of property for the use to which it has been restricted, detrimental effects to nearby properties, length of time the property has remained vacant, relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare. That's -- those are very key topics to which planning is based on, health, safety, and welfare. As compared to the hardship imposed to the landowner, is the use keeping with a comprehensive plan, and the recommendation of professional staff. Again, non-exclusive. It can -- if it's something that one of these is more important to the zoning board than the other, that's fine. These are just all things to consider when making that recommendation. Then I'll pass this to Jay.
Thank you, Michelle. You got it?
I will always go backwards.
It goes this way, right?
No, it goes all the way.
Like this? Okay, there we go. I'm going to talk a little bit, and I know I'm going to get this all messed up. I'm going to talk a little bit about the relationships with people and different groups as we review applications. So first piece is the applicant. Property owner developer submits the application. Then the planning staff reviews it, as we talked about, with the golden criteria, and looking at our comp plan, ensuring that it's consistent with the subdivision regulations, and going through that type of analysis. And then, the planning staff makes a recommendation. Then it goes before the zoning board. It evaluates the planning application against the regulations, the comp plan, and it recommends approval or denial of an application. And then, of course, the public is part of that process, too. And oftentimes, you know, as you all have discovered, the planning staff will make a recommendation, will go before at the zoning board. The public comes out and brings up a variety of issues on an applicant or application or whatever's an aspect of it. And then, that is part of the recommendation with the zoning board. And then, when that goes to the Board of County Commissioners, they evaluate all of that material together. There we go. I did it. Okay. They want to have us go backwards. And then, the participants of the planning process. We have the Planning Commission develops the comp plan, the zoning, the subdivision regulations, and of course, the Board of County Commissioners reviews it. The easiest way to keep this all in your mind, at least it works for me, is any type of an application itself, or a plat application, or an application for current planning, goes before the zoning board. Anything that's a policy consideration, such as an update to the comp plan, or the zoning regulations, overall policy development for the county, is usually before the Planning Commission. So that's -- the zoning board is current. Planning Commission is more long-range plan, land policy planning and development. One more time. There we go. Okay. And the, again, Planning Commission acts as advisory board, studying land use issues and policies in the unincorporated area. Primary duties, as you just mentioned, to consider updates to the rural comprehensive plan, and our zoning and subdivision regulations, and then they make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners is always the ultimate -- they're the factor that actually they vote. When they -- the zoning board and the Planning Commission is just a recommendation. The Board of County Commissioners, that is a signed resolution. And so, there we go. The zoning boards, just mentioned, kind of a review again. Reviewing land use and zoning proposals in the unincorporated area. They hold public hearings. Planning Commission holds public hearings as well, but usually, when the zoning board is holding a hearing, it's on a particular application, or a plat, or a conditional use permit. And then, they provide recommendations on land use applications to the BOCC. There we go. And the county staff, and where we fit in, is we obviously coordinate the applications. And when I say county staff, that's planning, public works, wastewater is brought in. Occasionally, we'll bring in parks staff as well, working with the Sheriff's Department. There's really, it's -- we have what we call a development review committee, which meets on a weekly basis for applications. That committee can kind of come and go at various topics, depending on who we need, but it's usually, it's always planning and public works at a minimum. And then, we'll bring in a wastewater if we need to, and other people for expertise as we review applications. Also, the fire department occasionally is part of that, too. Our building official is part of that review as well. So it's just a chance for the developers to meet, talk about their application. Gets everybody in the same room at the same time, frankly, is really the benefit of it. And we can meet, you know, weekly, but we can meet more often than that, and there's always kind of standing time, and it works very conveniently for everybody to do that. The -- obviously, provide the recommendation, the planning boards, the Planning Commission, the zoning boards, and then we also have legal staff that's part of that as well. And we rely on legal a lot. I mean, it's planning is one of these issues where constantly, there's -- we need advice or guidance from a legal department. And it's never, or very rarely is it ever clearly objective. It's either yes or no. It's more of a kind of a vague nuanced concept, and that's where legal is so helpful. So we rely on them a lot. PEG has a great team. Ryan Hager is our primary attorney, but we work with PEG as well directly, too. So, and then Bob Ford works with a lot of our public works projects, and right-of-way acquisition, and that type of thing. This is a -- I wanted to show this slide as kind of a wrap-up. Zoe Brown developed this, as I -- so Zoe, you get all the credit. This is a -- it kind of shows the one extreme or the other. You've got Planning Commission, issues such as the focus on long-term planning, preparing and revise the comp plan. And then, on the right, you've got the zoning board activities that I mentioned, you know, working on the applications or current planning-type things, recommendations based on the zoning and subdivision applications. And then, in the middle, is this area that affects both, shape of the growth and development of the county, and represent the interest of the county as a whole, and make the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So that's kind of a wrap-up in terms of what that process looks like, and some of the players that are involved in that. Our next slide is the -- there we go. Why is that working? Oh, there we go. Okay. Which Diane Wicklund is going to talk in more detail. This is, I pointed out, is one that is, was part of the reference material that we mentioned earlier part of the meeting. I think this is a great slide, because it kind of summarizes everything we've been talking about in terms of that application process, and we'll let Diane talk about that.
So good evening, everybody. So yeah, so I'm going to finish up this presentation with this last slide, kind of go over it very quickly. So as Jay mentioned, there is that handout that we gave you. Looks like we can't read it real good with that white lettering, but we'll -- but at least you've got the handout, so we can kind of go through that together. So this is kind of a flow chart, and so it's just showing the planning application process of any application. So whenever somebody submits an application, whether it's for a conditional use permit, rezoning, or a plat application, they go through this process. And so, it really starts out as just kind of an informal meeting between the applicant and staff. And so, somebody, you know, walks in and talks to staff, wants to do something. And then, if they want to pursue that, then it turns into a pre-application meeting, which is kind of a more, kind of a more formal meeting with staff, and then also other county departments, such as the Building Codes Department and Public Works Department. And so, that's a critical meeting, because that's kind of where the applicant can find out those other departments and their requirements. And then, we kind of work through any issues that the application may have kind of early on, so that by the time they submit that application, hopefully, it's kind of in good order, it meets all the requirements, and it kind of makes the rest of the process a lot smoother. So Jay kind of had us start doing that a few years ago, and that process seems to work out pretty good. So then, they submit that official application is submitted. That's about 45, 47 days prior to the zoning board meeting. And then, staff distributes that application to other entities and county departments, so like Public Works, other utilities, Rural Water District, those kind of entities. And they have about a week to review that application and return comments back to planning staff. And then, about, so the state statute, I think Michelle mentioned this, requires a legal notice to be published 20 days prior to zoning board meeting of the application. So then, that also happens. And then, about 10 days prior to the zoning board meeting, also a requirement is that letters are sent out to all property owners that are within 1,000 feet of that subject property. And so, we send those out certified mail, and that invites them to that public hearing meeting or the zoning board meeting. And so, that second row there, you can see, the bulk of that second row is where planning staff is gathering comments. They're reviewing the application, but we're also writing the staff report. And so, that takes up the bulk of that kind of time in between the application and zoning board meeting. And then, once that staff report is finalized, the staff reports and the agenda is then mailed out about one week prior to the zoning board meeting, and then posted on the website and sent out to the applicant and the zoning board. And then, staff prepares for that meeting within that week there. And then, finally, then, there's the public hearing, which is the meeting that the zoning board holds. That's the meeting for the property owners within 1,000 feet, and any public can come to. And so, the zoning board, again, you know, is, so they hear that application, they take public comment, and then they make that recommendation of, to the Board of County Commissioners, whether it's recommendation of approval or denial. And then, so after that zoning board meeting, then staff also drafts some additional documents that we send to the Board of County Commissioners. So when it gets, that application gets on the BOCC's agenda, there are several documents that we send to them in advance of that meeting. And so, some of those are resolutions. So if it's a resolution approving the application, then it's a resolution that states that, but then also states any stipulations of approval. And then, also, we provide them the meeting minutes from the zoning board meeting. And so, those are verbatim. And so, that's the record of that public hearing meeting. They also receive that. And then, also, kind of what we call a briefing sheet, which is just kind of a summary of the application, and then also includes the zoning board's recommendation, which is critical to that process. So, and then, finally, here, about three or four months later, after somebody submits an application, they get to go to the Board of County Commissioners, and of course, they make that final decision. And that's kind of the final decision. That's the end of that process for them. And then, they can go on and commence their project, be it plat, conditional use permit, whatever it is. And then, kind of after that, we just do some final action letters and close out of the file. So that's really, like I said, it ends up being about a three- or four-month process. And just to kind of note on this flow chart, so it's in different colors. So no matter which key player you are, whether you're planning staff, applicant, as zoning board members, Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, or just, or the public, you can kind of see where you fit in, where your role is, kind of where you participate in that process. So we thought it was just kind of a good visual to kind of show that process and kind of what all takes place, you know, before that application even gets to the zoning board. So I think that's it on that slide, so I think I'm handing it back over to Jay.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. All right. Well, we, as we went, just explained, gone through our legal process, or gone through our application, explained kind of who the players are, the different entities involved in the planning application. I'm going to, now, I'm going to turn it over to Peg Trent, their chief legal counsel with the county, that's going to talk a little bit about some of the legal perspectives and legal issues that are involved in some of these applications. And with that, I'll turn it over to Peg.
And I won't sing. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. All right, I get the fun part, even though I enjoyed the presentation. Good information. So I'm going to kind of tie this all together right now. So there was two ways. I was given an assignment today to see how I would present this material so it's applicable. And the other one is, I was going to show you videos of planning commissions, and then you get to see them perform, and then we get to talk about what happened and kind of apply what you've learned today. However, that didn't go as planned, so the next best is commonly asked questions. So I'm going to go through some commonly asked questions, kind of answering those questions, and then open it up to you to kind of give you feed However, that didn't go as planned, so the next best is commonly asked questions. So I'm going to go through some commonly asked questions, kind of answering those questions, and then open it up to you to kind of give you feedback what you think. And so these are going to be questions, I know that you're sitting there having these burning questions as you're sitting there, hearing these application and projects. The first question out of the gate, what do I do if I disagree with the staff recommendations on a planning project? Okay. Have you ever thought that? Yeah. Never. You all agree with the staff recommendations. Is that what you're telling me? Okay, we'll go to the next. So yes, that's a real question, and it's important, and that's why you were chosen, to voice your concerns. But it's how you bring about the concerns, and I want to go through, that process map in front of you is really important, because as you voice your concerns, it's really important how you do it. Because what you have to understand, the applicant is in the room when you are voicing your concerns, and you don't want to personalize it against the applicant, or more importantly, the staff, you want to keep it to the project. And the reason you want to do that, to articulate that, is because the staff has to reach back out after your meeting of the zoning board, when they hear the public comment, and they hear your comments, and say, hey, applicant, you heard what happened. The zoning board wants X, Y, Z. Now, if you go about it and start attacking, and I'm only saying it sometimes people get sensitive and their feelings get hurt if you say things in a certain way, think about that applicant. They've been working on it how many months before it comes to you? They're excited about their project, and you just say one thing bad and they get defensive. So it's really important that you're able to speak in a manner that allows them to understand, you're not attacking them, you're not attacking the project, here's an issue we need to address, and how we address it. And if you attack, or say it in a manner that offends that person, or staff, or anyone, how do we get two parties to come together to work out and agree to your stipulations? So it's really important how you go about it. The staff gave you some ideas. You have in one of these handouts, the golden factors, and these are the guidelines somewhat that you go through. I watched a meeting most recently, and it was done, and I will use the word artfully, how they walk through using, and I think because he's an attorney, he walked through the guidelines and the regulations, and did it very respectfully, that gives us an opportunity now to reach back to the applicant and say, hey, look, here's some of the concerns. We got landscaping, we've got noise issues, we need to do maybe this. What's your thoughts? You heard what happened. And they're going to be more, they want their project to go through, money, they want the project, they're trying to comply with the public, they want everybody else to feel that excitement that they feel. But when we don't give them that opportunity to speak and do it in a manner that's very respectful, and keeping in mind, when you don't agree, you're trying to understand, for instance, let's say you want to have some noise, some type of, there's a worry of noise, and so you want some screening, some landscape, or something along the line, you have to stay within the framework of our regulations. But if you do seem to go out, because every project's different, outside of that framework, we can get a stipulation if you go about it very nicely in a manner, but you generally speaking, we have to keep to the regulations. Okay? We can articulate sometimes within those golden factors, but that's what we're trying to make sure that's how you're approaching it. So I'm going to stop. Any questions? Yes. Kelly.
So, those are very easy and more objective examples. Can you use your cable mic?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I was going to go back and give her the microphone.
Okay, so those were very easy and objective examples you gave with the landscaping, noise, whatever.
Correct.
I think from my experience, the hardest ones are, does it fit the character of the area?
Good question.
And that's when it comes into individuals' perceptions, or, you know, the quality of life of a landowner or homeowner that's been there for a long time. And then also, even with noise, you always have that, those people that are like, I don't mind that sound. And then you've got somebody else, like, I don't mind that sound, and I live there, and I don't want to hear it 24/7. So can you artfully give me an example?
I don't want to use specific projects that are going through, because we still have a project that's out there in front of the board. But what I can say, and that was my next question, proposed question, is how do we address the concerns raised by the public? So that's going to be a question you're asking also. So I don't agree with it personally, and most of the times you don't agree is because you heard a public comment, and you heard from the public, and the public has raised concerns about what they feel. So Rick Lynn, who used to work in our legal department, put together this paper, which you have, on the golden factors. And he actually outlined, you know, when can you rely on the public? We're not saying you can't say no, but you have to be able to articulate it in a manner within these factors. So if a public is, I just don't want it in my neighborhood, that ain't going to fly. And we have to look at it legally, too, because will it withstand, up on appeal, if this applicant gets declined, how do we withstand that it's going to be sent back down, and then they're damaged as well, as we delay the project because we just said the neighbors don't want it? We can't talk like that, we have to give reasons why. And if you really actively listen to the public, they actually are telling you reasons that you can have in the golden, where you can outline that and tie it back and to the regulations.
Yes, and I do agree. I'm not, everything you're saying, but I spent an entire weekend going through the subdivision regulations in Johnson County zoning and all that. And even tonight, we go back, and the definition of planning was protect environment and overall quality of life. That, if you go through our regulations, it is brought, that one sentence is brought up almost every other paragraph, as a main thesis or a main theme throughout all of that. So define quality of life, and who, like, if somebody, if somebody is saying this interferes with my quality of life, and we have this right here in our definition to protect the quality of life, and it's in the zoning board, it's in multiple paragraphs in our binders, and I had already confessed to Jay that I didn't know if that was mine or not, but I highlighted all over it, so whoever gets it next time will see it. So this is my problem. You know, quality of life is a recurring theme in all of this, but yet when we have a citizen that comes up and says, this affects my quality of life, all of a sudden, they get, you know, and it's not, and it's not just because they're saying it, I totally agree with it, or I agree because there's another place for, the solution can be solved by not affecting this person's quality of life, but by finding a better location for maybe the, you know, the applicant's project. So how do you weigh that out? Those have been our biggest struggles. And that just does not seem, for all the stress on quality of life, and all of our documentation and paperwork to date, that seems, and lately just keeps seeming to fall short, you know, once the zoning board has, you know, cited all of that, and then it moves up to the next level. So how do we, how do we stand on that quality of life?
Outstanding question. I live in this my whole 35-plus years as a government attorney. We focus in the government on health, safety, and welfare of individuals in our community. That's the basis of why we do what we do in doing regulations, health, safety, welfare. Quality of life is, you're focusing in on one line. It has many other factors that you consider, and not just quality of life. And that isn't just the subjective of that, it's of that community, if you read what the factor says. So it is one factor of many that you have to do a balancing, and what is reasonableness? This isn't an easy job to do. And as you can know, I sit there and I've listened to some of applications that have gone through zoning, and I know it's difficult. It's difficult when it reaches the board level, too, because then people are also invested that they don't want it in their neighborhood for various reasons. So it's a balancing act. Staff has already done that before it comes to you. They're giving their recommendations because they have gone through that analysis, as you heard, the golden analysis, they've gone through the analysis from the regulations, they've gone through the comprehensive plan and the individual plans to bring those into your staff reports, so you have all that information to make your decision. So when it comes forward, that is the question. You are free to discuss that. But what happens is, what if you want to recommend a stipulation that was not recommended by staff? Again, you've got to be careful that it's tied to one of these factors and what's going, what is in the regulations and one of the golden factors. But what happens frequently is, if you're up there negotiating, this makes it hard for staff to then go, and their role, to talk to that applicant to see if they would consider moving this or coming in a manner. So what's better is you, as a board member, you express your concern about the project, how this is being, you know, from listening to the public, how are they addressing? And I know I'm using a sample, a simple one, because I'm trying to stay away from controversial, that item's still going to the board, so I can't talk about it. But let's say there's a noise item, you're going to want to talk about, you know, the public has brought forward a concern about the noise, the hours of that noise, and what's going on at this point, this needs to be addressed, and are there other solutions, alternative solutions to resolve that than what staff is recommending? And you can bring for that, but the problem is, some of these, if you're out there negotiating, the applicant is not going to be as willing to sit down and communicate. Some are, but some are not, in front of their client. So moving on, I want to make sure I get through these, because there's a lot of just, I know, questions that you are thinking at times. Can I speak with the county commissioner as to my view regarding the planning project after the board has voted? So that is a problem, because that is getting into putting, and I will tell, and the board members are very well-trained now, they know not to speak to you, because they have to vote, and they don't want to get conflicted off, that they got involved ex parte communication on how to vote on their project. So I'm not saying, and I'm not interfering with someone's First Amendment right, but we have to make sure that we're adhering to ethical standards and maintaining that integrity of that decision-making process. And that can be brought up by the applicant if they find out about it and it's denied, and that could be a process to reverse whatever decision is made. Another question is, does the applicant have to be present or address the board on the project? The applicant can be represented by an attorney. An attorney can speak, or a representative on behalf of the applicant. And just because the applicant doesn't speak, does not, should not be frowned upon or spoke badly of, some people are not public speakers to get up and talk about these items. And also, keep in mind, these applicants are invested in this project. It means a lot to them, they're passionate about what they're bringing forward and proud. A lot of the discussions have occurred behind the scenes when staff has had to tell them, hey, you can't do this, this isn't in our regs, I know you want to do this, but this isn't going to work. So there's a lot of that relationship and trust that's being built with that applicant who's coming forward. So it's really, you know, important that we are aware of our communications and how we communicate. Also, does the, can I make recommendations? We already talked about that. Can I go to the site of the proposed project and talk with the applicant and stakeholders about the project prior to the presentation of the board? Again, no, you cannot talk to other people, the evidence that you're going to get and what comes forward is going to come before your board for your decision. That's ex parte communication, one-sided, that you're hearing it, the whole board's not hearing it. And the board, I can tell you, the B O C C's been trained, they are not to talk to attorneys. They, as a matter of fact, they call me even on vacation to tell me that they have received a contact, and they're told immediately, do not contact, do not speak with them, do not go. Even if they're friends with the person, I tell them, do not go for Christmas cocktails right now with them. It is that important that we maintain the integrity of the process, that you are not having those one-sided conversations. Why? Because it becomes, it gives the appearance of bias, that you're leaning towards that person or that decision-maker. I can't speak for years ago, I can only speak since I've come into this position, and I'm very firm about that, that we are very mindful of our communications and what we are saying to one another prior. Some other questions? And I'll stop, I should stop here. Any questions? Oh, good.
Actually, I have two questions. One is the following, Kelly's question. I'm struggling a little bit sometimes with the balance between commercial requests versus, again, the quality of life sort of thing. So certainly, the local property owners must have a significant, I would think, a more significant influence, or should have more significant influence, on a commercial zoning request versus a, somebody splitting their lot into two lots or something. Is that true? Or, I mean, on the commercial side?
Jay, or do you guys?
Yeah, that's a good question, so I guess to make sure I clarify.
I'd ask anything that's policy.
Yeah. So your question is, considering when you have a commercial application that may be surrounded by rural or residential, and how do you weigh that with what's considered? Yeah, certainly, we would look at, and there's a real gray area, if we're considering a conditional use permit, that's permitted with a conditional use permit in an R U R. Those are even more difficult, right? But certainly, yes, it should be considered, those immediate property owners around that area definitely are part of that, public input process, like Peg mentioned, that's one part of the process, staff's recommendation, and then the zoning board's recommendation. You're weighing all of that information, but it is certainly, if you have got a commercial type of application or something that's more intense, you would definitely want to consider what is appropriate around there. But hopefully, we've already provided you with a recommendation in the staff report that looked at that, and we say whether staff does or does not recommend that particular use. Sometimes we don't. And a lot of times, like Peg mentioned, we have an applicant who proposes something, we say, are you crazy? That's not even going to, there's no way, we can't support that. And a lot of times, the application's never going to get to the board.
But you have to bring the application forward.
Bring it forward. If an applicant moves, wants to move forward, we just tell them, look, we're going to recommend, we wouldn't support it. But if it is something that can be supported, and it would work within the guidelines with a permitted use, like say a conditional use permit, it may make sense. But yeah, it's kind of one of those things, you have to weigh in everything together.
I was going to mention, too, Craig, just follow what Sean just said about conditional use permits. Usually, they're at a rural area with stipulations, and, you know, for record purposes, it acts as a commercial activity in a rural area, and that's why we have those stipulations. We have parameters of guidelines for approval based on our zoning regulations. But it is, to your point, it is difficult to kind of weigh that. And that's where, you know, staff will provide some stipulations, but those can be revised, can be changed, can be tightened down for the zoning board process. And that's, the way I look at it, it's part of the overall process. You know, it's like staff will make a recommendation, the zoning board looks at it, they will review it and study it, they'll make recommendations, they may alter a few of the stipulations, the recommendations, then the Board of County Commissioners looks at it. And they will also look at it, either accept it, or they'll reband it back to the zoning board, and they'll revise it again as, based on additional information or what they deem as appropriate. So it's, I understand what you're saying, that is a tough one, these conditional use permits are difficult.
And just to add on in my lane of the legal perspective for these stipulations, some of the recommendations or stipulations you're requesting to add on to some of these applications, some of them are more policy issues. For instance, I'm just going to give one that I've heard recently, I think I can safely say it is, we want to make sure that if I issue a conditional use permit, we're in, we are going out and enforcing it, making sure that they're complying. That is something of a policy issue that goes to Jay and Sean to, we need to maybe do things a little differently in the planning department and addressing policy. That's not something we put on a stipulation to the applicant. There needs to be conversations and following up, so those are separate. I've heard stipulations in my former life where they would want to put I've heard stipulations in my former life where they would want to put, I don't know if they've done it here, I haven't heard it, so I don't want to give you any ideas, but putting items on plats, making sure that people know that there's no water available to these. Do you do that here?
We have done that occasionally.
Yeah, we shouldn't be doing that. Again, people, the planning, and from the planning and zoning and zoning boards, their position is, well, the public needs to be put on notice that there's no water and there's no, you know, all of these items. So there's a disagreement. Is that a stipulation, you know, what you can put in, looking at the golden factors in our regulations? That would not cut it, just so you know. But no one's ever, usually, people just went along with it because it was just easier, you know, you just want to get your, it's standing between you and your financing for a project. So I mean, there's a lot of stipulations I hear coming out. We need to make sure they're towards the project and the applicant. Any other questions? Oh, yeah. Great, we're getting questions.
Sorry, one more question. This is regarding annexation of unincorporated area into a city. So just a little bit of background, where I live, in Western Johnson County, I'm in the last mile south of K-10 before you get to Douglas County. And until a year ago, I lived two and a half miles from DeSoto. Now I live a half a mile from DeSoto because of the sunflower annexation. And I'm, there's all sorts of kinds of pressure on the neighbors to sell to commercial guys for $75,000 an acre, things like that. Reason I live out there, because I want to be living in the rural part of the county. What role is any, does the planning commission have in, does the county, can the county even approve or disapprove an annexation request if a property owner requests it to the city?
Yeah, the annexation rules are definitely wide and varied, and the cities have really kind of ultimate control when they're, if it's, if a voluntary annexation from a property that wants to annex into a city, if they're contiguous or adjacent to the city, the county has no say in that. The cities can annex and accept or approve an annexation. Generally, when it's a voluntary annexation, the landowner's petitioning, I want to be in the city, they accept it. They don't have to go through any review or approval by the county. If it's an island annexation, if they were doing some type of a far-reaching annexation out in an area that's not contiguous, that does need to be approved by the county. The county does have a say in that process. It goes straight to the board of county commissioners and planning staff, and legal staff provide a recommendation.
And you guys have an agreement now, don't you, where you're working with different municipalities?
Yes. Yep. We do, I will tell you, and Peg, you know more about this than I do, but the island annexations are not as, you don't see them as often as you used to. The stipulation, it's more difficult to complete island annexation.
But it's.
Yes.
Yeah, they're not contiguous with the city, so it's leapfrog development. That's almost impossible now to do that.
But if it's a, if it's an adjacent property or adjacent parcel submitted by the applicant to be annexed into that city, really, the county has very little say in that product. Matter of fact, no, we can't have any of it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we are talking to one another. I mean, we can't tell them what to do, but there is, you have an agreement that we agree to talk. And that's a big step for government.
Oftentimes, too, what happens, we'll get a development proposal that someone wants to bring it forward and, at a pre-application meeting, and we will decide that, you know, actually, that makes more sense to be within, within the city. You should talk to the city about being annexed in. And the city, obviously, they like that as well, additional tax revenue. So they, it, but there are some that do not want to do that, and then it gets a little more complicated. But yeah, it's all part of that pre-application process.
Craig, I'll also mention too, you know, there, usually, we, the cities do try to make contact with us. We just actually received a request today from a city asking, hey, does planning staff have any comments or any, were there any previous issues with this property? We're considering an annexation, but it's usually always when it's adjacent to their city limits. But they're not required to contact us, but we do request that the cities generally let us know when there's an annexation coming forward. But if it's, if it's adjacent to their city, there's really no say in the process. We, we just, they're usually asking us if there have been any previous approvals, and we let them know, previous approvals or maybe violations, we let them know about that. But otherwise, yeah, there's really no say. The county doesn't have.
The entire districts and all of that, that creates, we'll just let that.
But it's, we know that that was a common question. We know when we did the update to the comprehensive plan last year in that north area, that was a common question we heard. We understand that. The city of DeSoto, especially with their large annexation, they're growing. Edgerton, Gardner, same thing, really growing on the far west boundaries. If it's adjacent and they've got a willing landowner, there's nothing the county can say in that process.
Did you have a question? Do you have a mic?
I have.
Do you need me to come to you? Here, here, here.
I wanted to do that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, you may be going to talk about this, but I don't know how much time we have, and I didn't want to leave tonight without raising this issue. I know there are two county commissioners here, and it kind of goes to them, and it has absolutely nothing to do with any pending applications. I think that in that flow chart that the staff had up there, that one that was on the screen, there is a, there is, when you get down to the very bottom there, Board of County Commissioner meeting, there's a big gap there, and there's something missing that is extremely important to the zoning boards and makes our life miserable, because I don't think the county commissioners get part of what their responsibility is related to remand. And by that, I mean, when the county commissioners decide that they, for whatever reason, want to remand something back to the zoning board, we get it back with virtually nothing more than consider, you know, trees, bluebirds, and the color of the water and the drainage ditch. That is completely useless to us. We have normally spent significant amount of time with the applicant, with the staff, with the adjoining landowners, with remoter, remote landowners. We have heard.
Wait a minute, you're not talking to the applicant.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about, we have spent all of this at the zoning board hearing. This is all on the record, okay? So there's a lot of record, there's a lot of evidence, we have collected that, and we have then discussed it after the hearing is closed. We have then made specific recommendations up to the B O C C. They have a hearing. I watch these on the, on the YouTube all the time. And usually, what I hear is, well, the staff said it was okay, so it must be okay. Or they've been there for a while, and I'm thinking, my God, they haven't considered anything of the specifics of what we considered. And then it comes back to us remanded, consider the X, Y, and Z. That is, in my opinion, wholly inappropriate. If the B O C C is going to remand something to us because they have a concern about it, that's their right, and I respect that. But if they want us to consider it, they're going to have to say, we didn't like your evidence on point A, and here is why. We think there is other evidence on the record that you failed to consider. And they need to go through that on each one of these processes, so we know exactly what they're talking about. Otherwise, it's pointless for us to go back through this process. That, and that.
And I will tell you, like we did with solar regulations, we actually, the solar regulations, the commission did that. They had it in writing, they signed off on it, sent it back. I mean, we can agree to talk.
Well, can I interject? Sort of. They remanded certain, like one, four, and five.
Oh, you remember it.
I'm just bringing those numbers. I'm just saying, they told us what numbers they didn't like that we, you know, voted on. But what we had to do was then we had to vote, and then we had to give our rationale, our accountability, our reason for why we were voting the way we did.
And that's why.
They didn't do it on their side.
Well, because at that point, and that's a great point, great question and process, we have to make sure the golden factors are addressed and the regulations are addressed in the rationale. And so it's very important, sometimes we hear things are thrown out, we need to be able to tie it to the, to these factors. So moving forward, I think we, we all hear you, and I think we all can do better and find a better way to do it, and, you know, we'll see how that goes in the future.
Follow-up quickly, would you, I'm not sure who understands what, and I freely admit, having been a zoning lawyer for 50 years, I, I'm kind of into this stuff. And having been on the board a long time, I'm.
Is your area of expertise?
Yeah, and it's, but I also recognize, having been on the board for so long, that you can't, you know, you can't make this too legal, you know, people are human, and so you have to make it work. But would you explain two things, and then I'll be quiet? Explain why the word quasi-judicial applies to all of this and why that's important. And secondly, explain why arbitrary and capricious is very difficult to prove.
Okay, first of all, quasi-judicial. I have gotten rid of that, basically, if you haven't noticed. When I came in in '21, I was schooled that I was to do non-quasi-judicial and judicial. Now, the staffing will tell you, I think that's confusing. So we have moved away from that. We just view it as, you know, and I think that triggers a lot of expectations when you say quasi-judicial. So we, but it, what we are saying, whether it's planning or zoning, you know, no ex parte communications, no, we've now triggered everything that you would normally see under a quasi-judicial hearing, and we've gotten away from that. And so we try not to say that, I know this paper's from '20, that was before my arrival, and that was common practice to say. I think it confuses everybody, that's why I don't even go down that road. It's just easier, and I know what the law says. The law does say what Rick Lynn says it says. But the fact is, in theory and practice, what you can explain to individuals and how we implement. And the next thing is a legal standard. And, you know, the legal standard of arbitrary and capricious is also, as you well know, based on these golden factors and weighing those out and proving it. You know, at this point, it just depends. I haven't seen, since I've been here, a case that we were taking over on appeal or anything along that line. But I don't feel the standard's that difficult. If we have our evidence and we've put everything, we can withstand anything, and I will be able to withstand it. But if I don't have it in the record and I don't have the protections, but we haven't leaned towards the legal, if anything, I've moved away from it to allow staff to be more doing their job and what your job is of planning and doing what's best practices for our community.
If that's the case, then I would, I wonder, I mean, it is a, it is a quasi-judicial process, and I appreciate what you're saying about kind of, you know, diluting it a little bit, oh, that's the bad word. But for those people that are interested, the affected, the applicant, whoever that may be, the adjoining landowners, the affected property owner, obviously, the city or the county, as the case may be, certainly, they're entitled in this process to have sufficient evidence on the record to support the decision ultimately of the decision-maker, the board of county commissioner. And now, as I understand arbitrade.
Well, you're in advisory, so it goes from you.
Yeah, right, right. I'm talking about the B O C C or city council, as the case may be. So my understanding of arbitrate capricious basically is, look, if there's anything on the record that will legitimately support whatever decision the B O C C makes, we're done. Even if 95% of the evidence is contrary, but there's one good piece, it's going to be tough to overturn it. So my only point is that as we go through this process and putting these things on the record, it becomes, you know, it becomes evident that it is, number one, very difficult for anyone, including adjoining landowners, let's say, or even the applicant for that matter, to challenge this effectively. I mean, you can do it if it's a really egregious case, but it's really tough to get it overturned. That's why, as a member of the zoning board that I've been asked to serve on, I think it's critically important that all these issues get thrashed out at the zoning board level and before the B O C C, because that's really the only place they're really going to have a chance to be considered. It's not going to be in court. And so that's why, to me, the quasi-judicial side means, hey, we got to be serious about this stuff, folks. And I mean at the B O C C level, too. And I know it's a tough job, and you've got a million other things to do up there, but it isn't enough, if you're going to remand this to us, to just say, oh, look at this or look at that, or, I got to know why. What is it that you don't like about the evidence that we put before you?
We can do better. We will look at it and move on from it. But yeah, I hear you. I'm not disagreeing. I'm listening, I heard what you said.
Okay. And then the last point on that is, you said, when we talked about how the timing for a remand works, how long the zoning board has to actually handle the remand, if, for some reason, the zoning board can't hear it. My understanding is that now we have a pretty clear understanding.
Yes. Yeah, we changed the procedure. There was a little hiccup, and now they're doing it a different way, and it should never happen again. I can't promise never, but it should not. And we're documenting that so they do it. But you know, you, these are, you know, processes, you know, we, we have this communication like we're having tonight, there, we're hearing you, too. So it happens. Okay, any other questions? Yes.
One more question. You stated that in your question was that, can I go out to a site, walk the site, talk to the applicant, yada, 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 and it was no. To clarify that, there's nothing wrong with if I receive a packet in the mail and I make a drive-by to familiarize myself with that area.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's if you're talking to people and you're going out, walking the property, which could be trespass, doing what you're doing, we have to be careful of that investigation. But you've got to understand where it is, so when the public comes in, you can see it. Some, some communities, and here, they try to give you aerials, give you maps so that you have that overview, so you can see better, to understand that for those who don't go out. And as, and, you know, and it could be remote, it could be dangerous, it could be the weather, there's various reasons. But you're not obligated, we prefer you get your evidence about it from the staff. But I'm not going to sit here and say, you know, that you can't. But I'm just saying, it's better you get it from staff. Go back in the back.
I've asked Sean and Jay about this a few times.
Can you hold that up?
The applicants that come before us, is it state law or Johnson County regulations that the applicant doesn't actually have to present, answer questions? I know sometimes engineering firms represent them and lawyers, but, you know, we've had some different issues where we've actually asked the question of the applicant, and the lawyer won't let the applicant come up.
Yeah, and that's, they're right, under the do it. And as to whether it's state law, it's not state law, that would be more local in our regulations. I haven't looked it up, but I'm sure it's not in there. But it, just general policy is the applicant. I've worked in communities where they had rules where the applicant had to speak if they had an attorney, the attorney speak, but they don't have to answer your questions. So they're right. But that isn't, you know, that isn't, if they don't want to answer a question, there could be reasons, we don't know, of nondisclosure agreements. There could be various reasons why a person doesn't want to answer for many reasons. It doesn't mean they're trying to do something that is sinister, you know, or avoiding you. Right, Jay?
No, I think the point that, you know, what I'm looking at on a zoning board is, the applicant is the one that's going to pull through the project, and the community is going to have five years or 10 years with that applicant. Doesn't mean they can't sell the endeavor. We're mainly talking about larger projects that have, you know, huge impacts on community is where it seems like the lawyer speaks and the applicant doesn't.
I will say too, Fred, it seems like the more sophisticated the application, they probably are going to be represented by an attorney. Now, a savvy attorney will say, you know, our applicant is here this evening as well, but I will be taking questions, something to that effect, if they don't want to speak directly. That has happened sometimes, I think a couple of times, they did not, unfortunately. But, but yeah, they, they are not required, or they do not have to speak if they choose not to.
And again, it goes back to if we, and I'm just trying to tell, it's just human nature. This staff is trying to negotiate what you want and what the public wants, and they're hearing you. So they come back after these meetings, you know, I don't know if it's on their flow chart, they sit down and talk with them, hey, let's talk about this, you know, and depending on how they are treated, because they, they are so passionate about their projects, they get offended by what is said. And also, I'm going to say, I'm just going to go out here, I've watched how staff, my staff, legal staff, everybody's staff gets talked to at times, we're here to support you, you know, and, you know, it goes a long way, and also right back at you, we should show you with the utmost respect, too. And if we're not, then it should be reported to Jay and to me and to what we're doing. But at this point, I think what happens is an applicant sees that, and that doesn't look, well, why should I listen to you to negotiate this when they can't even respect you or listen to you? You've got to make this a. You've got to make this about the project, about, you know, the noise, about that issue. I watched very, a meeting recently, I thought it, they did extremely well, some parts, was really well, how they walked through and articulated those reasons. And so you just need to keep to those reasons and not get into. Also, while I'm at it, you know, we're focused there on issues that are before the board and although you may have a question as a zoning matter about something over here, if it's not relevant, those are times you pick up the phone and call Jay and Sean, talk to them and they'll try to get you answers to your burning questions that may not be related. I see it in front of the Board of County Commissioners, they have a project that's before them, that reminds them of something related to that project on another matter, so they'll ask their question. We need to stay on topic again to that project and not go off. And so it's, it's, your questions are not wrong, trust me, I'm not saying, you just need to do it with the staff and letting them know. Is there any more questions? Okay, I have more to get through, just two more I wanted to get through. Okay.
I don't know if this is on or not.
Is it on?
Yeah.
I'd like to back up what Kelly was saying earlier about the quality of life, because I feel that that is all encompassing. I mean, there's a lot of things, not just this little thing in there. It's, it has to do with the degradation of safety in the area, it has to do with the crime rate in the area perhaps, along with the depreciation of the neighborhood in general. So there's a lot of things that are under the heading of quality of life. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, and that's just one factor, but you are right. And I think that's the, the issue that we, we run against, you know, every day, but we have to weigh all of it. And so you had one more question?
Well, just a quick comment. And, and I, I say this based on working with the county since, I don't know, 1973 or whatever, but I don't know that maybe everybody in this room realizes just how good the county zoning staff and legal folks are. Having litigated against them, having worked with them, having been involved in a hundred different ways and with Sean when he was at Alatha and, and many, many others and having, having fought with, worked with, whatever, these folks do an extremely difficult job and it is an incredible resource to be able to get ahold of, of Jay or Sean or, or legal, any of the legal counsel, whatever. And I, I, I think, you know, I'm not hesitant to call and say, what about this, what about that, you know, not about a specific thing, but I think, in my opinion, and it needs to be said because you don't, most people don't hand out that many compliments, if we, if, if, even though we may encounter problems, things we disagree with at the B O C C, whatever, the people of Johnson County, I think, are extremely fortunate to have the quality of legal counsel and zoning staff that this county has. It's equal to or better than any city that I've done any, any, any work with. And I know that from having litigated around the bush on various things with the county and Rick Lynn and others, that they don't miss a beat. They make you, they make you stand behind what you're trying to do, but they're also very willing to work, to try to work things out. So my only reason for saying that is, for the zoning board members, the planning commission members, don't overlook the opportunity to, if you have a question, to really go sit down and talk with these people and say, what about this, what about this, what about this?
I agree, that is an excellent point. The sooner you go in and talk to staff, you'd be amazed how they start to think of things you're thinking of and, you know, to address those issues.
So that's a good point. I have two points I want to make real quick and I know I'm holding over because we're probably past halftime. Am I permitted to discuss a planning project with other board members prior to the meeting, zoning board meeting? Again, you are under, obligated under Kansas Open Record, Open, pardon me, Open Meetings Act. As such, those are serial communications, that can be a violation of coma and we will be, if it is learned of by the applicant, which that it does concern me frequently because we get cora requests, record requests, all the time of what our communications, first sign we know we're getting sued. And we know what's going on in a lot of ways, that is a concern. I'll know, you'll wonder sometimes how I know I hear things is because someone will do a record request or someone will do something and that's how I learn of everything. We have to be careful about those communications and how that's occurring. If you hit a majority, we have of a board, we have a, we have a problem with coma. And that's, I just want to make sure we don't end up in that situation. The last question, moving on, and this is it, I pre, I think I've covered all that I could think of, is we, we love to give legal advice and we can't do it in a public meeting. And I know I get asked legal advice or legal direction, I try to avoid it in a public meeting, but I've been doing it way too long, I know it's going to happen. And we can do it, but there's certain reasons when we say we can't comment on it, it's because we know legally we're going to potentially have a lawsuit and that tape will be called up to used against us. So a lot of times we'll sidestep, we're not trying to be cagey, we're not trying to be mean to you, we just can't talk about it publicly because of our client, we are, we know we may get sued on the issue. We've been threatened, we get threatened all the time that we're getting sued. So at this point, you know, I, I try not to let that rule being open because I think the public needs to know why you're doing certain things. And I probably go too far sometimes, but I think that we need to be more transparent. But when we say no, there is a reason why we say no. And we don't want you to think that, you know, we know what's happening behind the scene that we can't tell you. Okay? Legal opinions, anything you need, that goes through staff and through your board voting, if you need additional information or you want something as a board, it goes through your board to vote for that, not that you just, you know, make a request for legal opinions. We have to have that going through the board. You, you act through the board. So a vote of the board is what gives us direction to move. And then Jay and Sean sometimes will request, or I even do, legal opinions, even though they haven't requested, just so we have it documented and moving forward, issues are identified as we go along. So I just wanted you to know, we are doing our work behind the scenes to make sure staff is aware and also what we can defend in court. We're always looking at that. Anything else, Ryan, that I have overlooked? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
It kind of touches on many of the things that was brought up tonight and I agree with almost everything that was brought up tonight, I just sometimes don't think that in reality it's happening as much.
I agree.
And that's something everybody needs to work on. I like the fact that maybe there can be better respect across all parties and the only, and I agree, I mean, Jay and I have had coffee, I like to know what it's like to be in someone else's shoes and understand where the perspective they're coming from. But the one comment that I'm going to bring up, and like I said, and the application's already dead in the water, it's done, it, whatever, so I'm not, it doesn't matter whether we reference it by name or not, but I'm not going to, is I have a problem when the zoning board puts a lot of time and effort into something and the only time I care about holding people accountable is more of the accountability that if I'm going to make a judgment call and hope and pray that this applicant's going to live up to its word, I know that the other citizens are going to be disappointed and I just, if I know that there's no accountability, it gets really hard to keep doing that. So that's the only point there. But when the zoning board puts stipulations, which is within our purview to do with these applications, I'm going to say right now, my biggest pet peeve, and Jay knows this because we emailed, is when I watch these county commissioner meetings, and you've touched on bias, there is a huge bias when staff does a report on an application in front of the county commissioners. I've heard county commissioners say multiple times, well, there's no complaints, there haven't been any complaints, and staff never says, well, there, there were complaints. They don't correct the issue. And then they also don't bring up both sides equally. I, you know, county commissioners can vote however they want. All I want is a fair shake and a representation of both sides that took place at the meetings. And I can tell you that is not happening on some of these applications. And then it does get disrespectful when some of the stipulations we put on are sort of dismissed or they don't understand why those, you know, stipulations or they don't know. And then staff doesn't do their due diligence to explain exactly why those were put on because this was what was discussed at the meetings, this is what the property owners brought up, this is what the zoning board came up.
Staff reports aren't explaining it?
Yes, and that's always Jay's response. So here's my thing, if that's going to be the response for the citizens who are not getting their side shared by staff, then if a county commissioner asks a question that is clearly in the staff report, then staff should just clearly say, all of that's in your information. But it's not right for staff to only bring up and talk about one side of it. And even, I mean, this was so blatant where the county commissioner, they were trying to understand why we put stipulations on it and kind of get in the head of what took place in the meeting, like why would, why would the zoning board put all these stipulations on? And the answer to that question was like, ah, you know, I don't know, maybe, I think it was just the residents just didn't like it there. That was, you know, and I have nothing against the staff, they're all great, they do, but that is a terrible representation of all the comments that were said at the zoning board and it's a terrible representation of the due diligence we did to try and thread that needle and make everybody happy, but you're not representing the citizens, which once again goes back to the quality of life, all of this yada, yada is what's so important with planning. So I sort of have a hard time with taking all of this in, but then knowing how things have gone and the reality is not really, you know, following all the stuff that's said. So hopefully that can be addressed. And I, I really wish the county commissioners would go back and watch a couple of the zoning boards, especially the ones that were remanded.
And do you know the transcript, I think, is put in the packet, yeah?
Yeah, but that's why, but I don't know if they read it and they don't, it, it doesn't look like they've, and I wouldn't blame them if they didn't read every single word, but the deep dive, and that's why, you know, I'm assuming staff should be there and if that question, and if a question gets posed where there's two sides to that answer and it's appropriate to say both those sides, because if you're not, that's bias.
Okay, so what, if I hear you and we'll take this back and discuss it among ourselves is you're suggesting a better format that we are presenting in order that they're hearing the zoning board and public comments and making sure that we're pointing those out that are in the staff report.
Fair representation.
Okay, okay. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I was just going to say, oblige, I was just going to say, too, that, and, and there again, you know, it's, it's one of those, the, the B O C C gets an entire packet of information, they get the, the staff report, there's a briefing sheet, they get the full verbatim minutes for that zoning board. Now, some of the commissioners actually watch the YouTube videos of the meeting and I understand there's, there's time issues there, but, but generally, you know, they, they have all of that information in front of them. And if, if we weren't clear in terms of a, of a bias, I just think that, that in terms of the, if, if asked about prior complaints or prior issues, we, you know, we, we look at our code enforcement records, yes, there might be people that, that, that voiced concerns during the hearing before the zoning board and those same people or representatives voiced their concerns before the B O C C as well. And we
Yes, and I agree, but the, that's been a problem and that's the whole accountability with the stuff is the citizens have not, there has not been until just recently that we had a formal complaint thing. So the citizens, they call the sheriff, then the sheriff, so they don't always know where to complain. So if they show up at a zoning board with their complaints, that should be on record as a complaint and if a county commissioner asks, well, have there been complaints? That should be stated, so.
I, I will say, and, and yeah, Kelly, to your point, it's a very good point, you're, you're right about this, this anonymous code, code complaint form that we have. We had a, a previous version of it that was still, that we still utilize, but it wasn't this, through the, through the portal, through the web. So we have tried to make it much more user friendly than what it was before and that is collected, it goes to our planner on duty or the pod of the day. So yeah, those are collected and we, we certainly pay attention to those, too.
But Can I say one thing, can I say two things? So to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, I guess, having been on the board now for three years, I hope, there were a couple of comments in one of the recent Board of County Commissioner meetings that kind of implied that the board was being punitive or other comments and, and I feel like, at least with the East Zoning Board, on, on the big controversial things, we might spend five hours listening to testimony, I think we all read through the packets, like every single letter, would go out to the site and my impression, it could have been me, was that potentially the Board of County Commissioners, and my father was a long public servant and all that, so I, I get that you can't read everything, but I want the board to know how much time that we put into, to our job and how much we care about balancing the staff and what they say and balancing the feedback, what we know about the community and the project and everything and the golden criteria and all that. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, in my course of business, I've been in front of 10 or 15 different jurisdictions for zoning and I do believe Johnson County zoning is very, very good. Jay, Sean, Michelle, Diane, I think the reports that we get, the amount of information, the time they put into the projects that we get are very thorough and I think as a board, we have ample information to make decisions. I don't, we don't always agree and yeah, I probably ask a lot of questions and I push back, but I feel like that, you know, the county is very well represented by the staff that we have and I appreciate all the work they put in. And, you know, I, there is some, you know, push, push and tug between the board and the staff sometimes, but I, you know, I would hope that no one feels that it's personal and we're, you know, we're trying to look out for the landowners and balance, make the best decisions for our community, so.
Appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I was going to say, that's probably a good way to end it as well, a great comment. The way I look at planning, you know, it's, it's part of a process, as I said before and there's, staff makes a recommendation, you may not, may not always agree with it. Sometimes we get it wrong, but although I, I think we're, we're right most of the time or, or the majority of the time, but there's times, you know, and we need to tweak it a little bit. But yeah, I, I agree, you don't have to agree with us entirely, I always, I appreciate the candid feedback on things, you know, because we're, we're not perfect and we'll certainly try to, to, to make some improvements on things, too. But I think we've got a good process that's very transparent as, as possible, we, and working with the public, working with the Board of County Commissioners and that applicant and balancing all of those interests. It's a tough job, you all have a tough job as well, and so I'm, I'm very sensitive to that, the time that you spend doing this, you know, the time on a Tuesday evening to, to sit for two and a half hours to talk, to talk about planning, so I do appreciate that. I appreciate the planning staff, Peg, thank you for your comments. Once again, Melissa and Elizabeth for, for setting up the room and the food and if you, if you are hungry or continue to be hungry, please grab a sandwich because that's less, less for me to eat tomorrow. But I, I do appreciate everybody's time and thank you all for being here tonight, great comments. And if, if you do want to follow up on anything tonight, please send me an email or call me and that goes for all of the planning staff as well as, as legal, we'll make sure it gets answered. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.